The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV II, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
I'm Cheryl Hansen, Dan Ryland's here, and continuing with our questions and interviews of candidates for the upcoming spring election. Very, very pleased to welcome to the show this evening, at least in this first half, John Lumberger. John is the incumbent on the school board who is seeking reelection, and we'll get into why he wants to be reelected to the board and so forth, but welcome. Thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Nice to see you, John.
Thank you for having me.
Is this your second term you're seeking now, or are you currently in your second term?
I'm in my first term, this is my second.
First term, okay, and they're three-year terms. So he is seeking reelection for his second three-year term. So anyway, what is making you want to run again, especially right now? This is a crazy time to be...
As events unfold, it's a harder and harder question to answer, right? But I still have, well, a couple things. One, the kind of immediate that's come up more recently, I think that I've never seen this community more divided than I have now. I mean, we are kind of split on some of these issues that are coming out of the state capital, and I think, you know, I said today, "A house divided cannot stand," and I think one of my goals is to try and reunite this community. And, you know, I'm going to take a very level-headed, even keel approach, listen to both sides, try and, you know, bring the groups together again. So that's sort of the immediate thing that needs to happen. You know, more long-term, the strategic planning process that we just got started when we hired Dr. Vigot recently, maybe it's not so recent anymore, it seems recent.
Yeah. He's still in his first year.
He is, yes. And I think that that's something that, again, is very important. We were in a situation, I thought, when I first got on the board, that was not sustainable. We were looking at, well, I actually, you know, made a little chart for myself, looking at what was happening to our budget with the QEO and the 3.8 percent stuff, and it wasn't sustainable. And so when we got Don on board, we said, "Look, we need to have some strategic plans, we need to put all the big components together and get the district on a sustainable path." And that includes the facilities, the budget, you know, all that kind of stuff. We added, of course, most importantly, learning and student achievement. And there's a number of different pillars, they call them, to that. But, you know, I want to follow through on that and make sure that gets done, so that's kind of a motivating thing. And of course, as always, as part of that, you know, I want to be the advocate on the board for neighborhood schools. You know, I've gotten to know some of the PTO groups and some of the schools, and I'm very impressed with the energy and commitment that these groups have for their, you know, their school, their kids, and their community.
I think your idea and desire to reunite the community, well, I don't know if it's ever been totally united, but we're going to say unite. Let's say that. I think that's a really laudable goal, but right now, it's so divided, like you said, like it's never been before. What would be some of your ideas on how to, you know, create some kind of unity there?
Well, I think, you know, I think, first of all, just listening. I've got, you know, even when we closed those two schools a couple years ago, Green Meadow and Lincoln, it wasn't nearly this kind of outcry. We didn't have a lot of parents come to the meetings and all that sort of stuff. But my district email is just jammed, and I've got pages and pages and phone calls. And phone calls from, you know, some people I don't know and some people I do know, and I tried to listen. You know, sometimes, depending upon how tired I am and whatnot, I do a better job than others.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I'm trying to listen to both sides and ask them questions. I mean, "Why are you upset?" "What is the, you know, what would you offer as a solution?" And just take that all into account, and, you know, by listening to both sides, trying to find some common ground. I think, you know, we can all agree that we want to have the best possible education for our students that we can afford. I mean, you know, obviously, there's limits on the financial side, but, you know, if we can say, "Look, okay, we all want that," there's some starting ground. Now, how do we, how do we get there?
Sure. Well, you know, we want to cover a lot of ground here, but on that subject, with the budget, and I know you probably have some questions about the budget, and I do two, they're maybe the same, but one of the things, talking about listening to people, one of the things right now, you know, and finding out why people are upset, and one of the reasons they're upset right now, and we're taping this on March 17th, they're upset right now because today, the district started meeting with the unions to try to get collective bargaining agreements squared away before the new law takes effect. And of course, that remains to be seen, if that's going to, you know, have a restraining order and joining them from putting that law on the books right now or not, but as of right now, it's set to go into effect next week, I believe, isn't it?
March 24th or 25th.
Yep, so next week sometime. You know, why the rush to get this done, I think, is what people are saying. If it's, if everything is going to be fair, what's the reason for the rush?
Well, first of all, I mean, you know, they requested to talk to us, and, you know, my question, I guess, is what's the harm in listening? You know, we have no obligations. And, you know, a lot of these employees have been very excellent, dedicated, committed employees for 30, 35 years, some of them. And I think they at least earned the respect to be heard. So, you know, from my point of view, I can, I can listen.
Could they be heard anytime, though? I mean, do they have to be heard before the law takes effect?
They, you know, want it to be heard now. And like I said, today, March 17th, everybody is very upset. I think, you know, on that side of it, and it's the same really on the other side of it, from what I'm hearing, neither side can see the future right now. And when you can't see the future, that's very unnerving. You don't know, "How do I plan? Can I afford to have another baby? Can I afford to, you know, buy this car I wanted to buy?" And that's on both sides of the issue.
Yeah, I agree.
So, you know, we need to, we need to listen to people. We, you know, we listened today, and that's all I can say right now, we listened today.
In your opening comments, you both talked about such a divided community. Ironically, this is the least divided school board that I've seen since I've been on ION Oshkosh. It's usually a six-one vote. So although the bigger community is really divided, you have a pretty consensus board, which is the most consensus board I've seen in a long time, just as a comment. Neighborhood schools, do I take that to mean John Lumberger, if elected, isn't going to eliminate any schools?
I mean, the administration would have to make one heck of an argument.
Okay.
I, you know, I guess, you know, what I'm hearing now, you know, at our last strategic planning meeting, was we're looking for efficiencies, okay? They're certainly concerned about the budget, and we don't know what's coming down the road. The next round of cuts within, you know, what we now have now is the budget reconciliation or budget repair bill.
Repair, yeah.
Yeah, budget repair bill. But now the next biennial budget's coming up, and that could be even bigger cuts. So, you know, we're looking at all sorts of possibilities. How are we going to weather this? The way I understand it, they've kind of capped our levy limit, we can't go above it unless we go to referendum. So our hands are kind of tied on that side. So we're a little worried about this, that if they do cut us, how do we, how do we handle the, and, you know, Don Vigot and his staff have put together a really long list of contingency cuts, and we start here and then we move down. And down in Phase Two, there is some possibility of maybe having to close or consolidate a school. Now, there's different options there. We were presented with three of them the other night. One would be just simply closing, the simplest one would just simply be closing one of the middle schools and then having, going with four middle schools and just, you know, redistricting those kids. And the other two were, had some combination of school closings involved in that.
What's a neighborhood school?
Well, I mean, that's a darn good question, because...
And we run into this all the time, we're in a neighborhood revitalization, and everyone has a different definition of what a neighborhood is.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard, well, it still could be a neighborhood school even if it's off two miles out of your neighborhood. Yeah, I don't buy that. I, you know, I, I've been to, like, well, a couple examples, Oakwood and Smith, and met with their PTOs, and I'm amazed, as I'm sitting there in Smith's school with the PTO, all the stuff that's going on with the kids, they come back to the school after school, it's their kind of social center. And they, you know, in my opinion, it can't be a neighborhood school if the kids don't have easy access to it after school. If it's two miles off, they're not likely to go down there to play on the playground equipment and shoot basketballs or whatever. It's just too hard to get there for them. So, you know, I think that it has, there has to be a geographical component to a neighborhood school, and it's so important to the, to the local neighborhood, it's the social center, it's where people kind of congregate, kids, parents, and I think that to move it, say, "Okay, well, we'll keep you together as a group, but you're going to be two mile, two and a half miles over here," you lose something there, you really do. And then there's other considerations, too. You know, property values are affected by having a school in the neighborhood, parents are looking for that, so. And, you know, and I'm concerned about property values because that affects our...
Your base.
That's our base, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
You know, the district right now is looking at, over the next five years, John, having to cut something like 26.6 million, it might be even more, depending on what really shakes out with, with the governor's budget plans. You know, that's a lot of money over a five-year period. There's got to be something, somewhere, that gives. What are your thoughts on what might have to fall by the wayside?
Well, I think, yeah, I think everything's got to go on the table then. What, you know, where we are now with how everything is structured, it's like, well, we started with a little house, and then we added on a room here and a room there and a loft up here, and it's kind of clunky. And, you know, if there's any silver lining to this cloud, it's that, you know, we can kind of clear the ground and build a new edifice, a new structure, and looking at everything.
Look at everything, okay.
Everything's on the table. I mean, you know, and you know what the issues are. I mean, it's teacher pay, it's retirement and merit, and on and on and on, right? A whole ball of wax.
Well, let's, let's talk about some of those things that, because earlier, you made, you made a very good point. People aren't sure right now if they can, you know, have another baby or buy a new car or some aren't sure if they can afford to even keep their homes, probably.
Yes, yes.
You know, and yet, in light of all this uncertainty, Dr. Vigot, our superintendent, is, you know, adamant about bringing forward some referendum questions. And I'd like to just get kind of your quick responses to these different issues, because there are three different, three different ones. One is to build a new Oaklawn Elementary and a Southside Elementary at a cost of 25 million.
Well, I would separate those two things out.
Okay.
I mean, let's just talk about the Oaklawn one first.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Sure.
You know, I think that we need to do something with Oaklawn, and I think, I know I am, and I think many of the board members are committed to doing something with Oaklawn. You know, it's just a matter of getting the community behind that. I've been in that school a number of times, and it's not adequate. I mean, it's, it's just...
I can remember you, when we interviewed you, when you ran the beginning of your first term.
Three years ago.
You said, "We have to do something about Oaklawn."
Yes, I mean, I remember going in there, and they had these suspended electric lights, and they had buckets on top of the lights catching the water. This is not a good thing. And, you know, there's, you know, the teachers have found, you know, mice droppings and all sorts of stuff, so it's, we got to do something about that, and I think that's my number one priority. Now, yeah, we are in tough economic times, but some, some of those older schools in town were built during the depression, and, you know, we'll find a way to do that. I think that from a kind of a psychological point, if, if people see us putting a referendum out there so that we can find money to give teachers pay raises, that's not going to fly.
Right.
We need to make this airtight so they know and they're guaranteed that when they vote for that referendum, it is, all of it, every penny of it, is going to go to the, to the Oaklawn building. And I think that the Oaklawn, again, here's this sort of community aspect in neighborhood schools, those Oaklawn parents have been great. I mean, they come to the school board meeting, they've been coming to the school board meetings...
For a long time.
And they have a new piece of information for us every meeting. And, you know, I actually look forward to seeing what they're going to bring tonight or whatever it is, you know. And so they're educating us, and they're, and I think not just us, but they're educating the community. So that when this comes up, the people in the community, if they're paying attention, will know, I mean, you know, they've really done our job for us in selling this, so they've been great.
Okay. Building a new Southside Elementary School, that was the other part of one question that Dr. Vigot wants to bring forward.
Yeah, you know, right now, I think that's one school too many for me. You know, I don't know, you know, other board members can disagree, but, you know, I have a hard time with the numbers. If it's going to take, however we do it, you know, I mean, there are some options. We could repurpose Tipler, or we could just build a new school on the Shapiro site, and, you know, those were a couple of things that we saw at the, at the last planning meeting. But you're investing nine, 10 million dollars at least into something like that, and the savings, let's say you, you know, I'm just throwing number, ballpark numbers out, I don't know how firm these are, you know, Allison's done a lot more detailed work on this, but, you know, if it costs you 10 million and you're saving a half a million a year, the payback on that for break even is 20 years. And we haven't got 20 years. We need to do something more immediate. You know, and I think that, you know, I'm hearing that Shapiro isn't an adequate learning facility because there's no walls, but I'm looking at the student achievement in that school, and it's extremely high. So I can't, I'm having a little trouble right now reconciling how, on one hand, I'm being told that, well, you know, this isn't a good school for learning because there's no walls, and on the other hand, look at the test scores.
Well, and that school goes back a long ways, but I can vaguely remember back then, I thought that that was one of the reasons for having kind of the open concept was, because it was new?
Mm-hmm.
It was progressive?
Trendy.
Yep, and it was going to benefit the students. So, okay, real quickly then, let's talk about these other two referendum questions.
Okay.
Maintenance, technology, and security needs, 14 million. And so would you support that? And then the other one is exceeding the revenue caps for, let's see, five years, basically. So...
Well, I mean, here we are, maintenance again, right? We had a referendum that passed two years ago, I think it was for five years, going 1.3 over. We had that. We could, we have three more years of that, so I'm not sure why we need to go back to that. Maybe after the end of three years, we could look at another maintenance one.
But you didn't exercise that option.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why, if we haven't done it...
But the fact that you didn't, I'm not sure that you can now go back and, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, this is my, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I mean, not a lot of people know.
Yeah. Well, and, but I, I've talked to people who have said, "You know what, they didn't exercise that option before when we gave it to them, and so we're not..."
So I give it to them again.
"We're not going to do it now."
I think, I think that, you know, in defense of the board, you know, that was passed just before the big recession hit. And was, boy, you know, do we really want to add this onto the tax thing? So we've, we've tried to segregate that 1.3 million for referendum needs. We, actually, we haven't tried, we have segregated that 1.3, and actually, it's, it's worked out well because, because of the economy, we've been able to get a lot more for our money than we would have. So, you know, we had Randy Johnston, our facilities guy, make a list of things, and, you know, each budget, there's, that is in there. But it's not, it's not like we went over and got extra, we, but we have segregated. So we've tried to keep the promise of the community without taxing them to death.
Okay, go ahead.
I have some short questions.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I'll get short answers.
Okay.
Did you support teachers calling in sick to attend protest rallies in Madison?
No.
Would you support closing Oshkosh West or Oshkosh North High Schools to attend basketball tournaments later this year in Madison?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I mean, I know Green Bay, actually, when they had, the Packers had their Super Bowl party, actually let the, if the kids could show that they went to the Super Bowl party in Lambeau Field, they weren't docked for, for that. You know, I mean, if you want to do something bad enough, then you should be willing to pay the price, right?
Okay, two questions on money for teachers. Are Oshkosh teachers underpaid?
You know, I, I think we rank a little bit below average for this area, but I would say they're...
How about support merit pay for Oshkosh teachers?
I think that's going to become a critical issue. I think what's going to happen, well, with this total new edifice thing, we've got to look at steps and lanes, and I think that somehow that's going to be rolled in there. And it will be, I think.
Thank you. One more, is the district over testing on standardized tests?
I could see less testing. I mean, I, I just, yeah.
Okay, thank you, those are...
Okay, tossing it back to me.
Yeah, yeah, go.
All right. I kind of want to go back to the, the collective bargaining and the labor negotiations going on right now, and I know that because it's just started as of today, there's not a lot that you can discuss, but just in general terms, John, what kinds of concessions, I mean, it's clear, the teachers' union, all the unions are going to have to make some kind of concessions. What kinds of concessions would you, as a board member, be looking for?
Well, I'm squirming here because I don't, because we've been, you know, we're in negotiations, and I don't know if I can answer that legally.
Okay. Well, as a taxpayer...
I would, I would say this, though, I think that, you know, obviously, they would have to, they would have to give us what we could get if we waited two weeks. Does that make sense?
Say that again.
Well, in two weeks, this new law goes into effect, right?
Well, next week it's supposed to.
Or in one week, I'm sorry.
Whatever, it could go.
Whenever it goes.
Yeah, so, so, you know, they would have to give us what we could get then.
Okay, all right.
And then there would have to be some other sort of benefit for them and some extra benefit for us as a trade-off. But, you know, those are very general terms, it has to make sense to do it, right? At this point in time, like I said, we, we respected them, showed them the respect they earned by listening to them.
Okay, all right, very well.
This is kind of a, working on this, I watch the board meetings fairly often, and this is kind of, does lack of board input transfer more power to the superintendent? This is kind of a quiet board. You must, you seem to have a hard time getting people to respond. There are two board members who save very little. You have one who says a lot, and then there's one board member or two that respond, but, you know, it seems to me that you're, you're really pushing, the discussion on that board is, is kind of weak.
Yeah, well, we have, I mean, we have some very good discussions in our, in our board retreats.
Okay.
And, you know, to be honest, it's hard to talk when the cameras are on, although you two are veterans, they don't bother you, but I think especially for the newer board members, when those cameras click on, and I've heard this from people at other districts too, when those cameras click on, it kind of, you know, it's quälches the...
My response is they're elected public officials, and that's part of the game.
But they're still human beings. And I think as, as I got more comfortable in front of the camera, it started happening.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and, and it is difficult, I mean, just the physical layout, I mean, when I first got on there, I argued a long time about how the tables were. It's hard to have a discussion when you're sitting in a row like this, and somebody's on, you can't see them.
And it's a terrible room to televise because the cameras don't fit the size of the room.
We managed, you know, after a lot of arguing, we managed to get the tables, the wings brought in, so we now have kind of a horseshoe. And so it's made discussion a little easier. But in the, in the, in the retreats, that's where we really, we sit around tables in groups and we really get into some good discussions, and then, you know, we kind of come back to the, to the monthly meetings.
I didn't mean it unkind, but it just, it just seems that...
Yeah, and I think we're...
There's a lot of silence publicly.
You know, we're, like you said, we're, we're a civil group.
Yeah, you are, and I compliment you as president. I think the civility and the leadership you brought on the board compared to some of the other years has been really positive.
Well, thank you.
John, you mentioned the board retreats, and that brings me to another question that I've kind of asked a couple of other folks. You know, when you, we've got a, our superintendent right now is making a proposal, and I don't know, maybe you've already voted on this, because I didn't see the last school board meeting, but the proposal was that you'd have one regularly scheduled board meeting that's always held in the same place and same day, same time, and that kind of thing. And then you'd have the second meeting in the month would kind of be a retreat sort of thing, and it would kind of be a floating sort of thing as far as location goes. Now, when Allison Garner was on, who's also running for school board, she didn't think it was going to be quite that severe, if you will. But what are your thoughts on this proposal, and do you think it disenfranchises voters?
No, I, I think what we finally decided, if I recall right, what we voted on was we were going to keep the, the retreats in that room.
Okay.
Okay? And I know Don was talking, I thought he was talking with you guys, OKAT, right, about televising, and there was some, I don't know if it's been all worked out yet, but I think the reason is because essentially now, because of the amount of work we've been doing, it's gotten to be, you know, like we've got three meetings, three big meetings a month instead of two, and I think we're trying to get that down to more reasonable workload, so we can still have our retreats, but, but, you know, two big meetings instead of three, because it is, I mean, I'm wearing out. I told Mary Beth, "I can't keep this pace up." And maybe I'm just getting older, but, and I know Don's staff is too. I mean, they've been putting in unbelievable hours.
It's not going to get easier, either.
Well, it's gotten harder all of a sudden. But, but, yeah, we need to be careful we don't burn people out.
Okay. Almost out of time. Why don't you take about 30 seconds, look into camera three, tell folks why they should vote for you, and send you back to the school board.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for giving me the chance to be on the school board for these three years. I really appreciate that. Again, I'm hoping that, that you vote for me again. I'm going to try, continue to try and unite this community and keep the school board civil and united. And again, I'm hoping that I can contribute something meaningful to the strategic planning process and get this district kind of on a sustainable path. Thank you.
Okay, all right, excellent. All right, two seats are open, and there are four candidates, and John is hoping that he will be one of those who will be occupying a seat come next month. So thanks much for being here, good luck.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna take a short break. When we come back, we will be joined by Dan Bissett, who's running for Winnebago County Circuit Court Judge in Branch Six, and we'll be right back.
Later.
And welcome back to the second half of ION Oshkosh. And, uh, before the break, I said that Dan Bissett would be here, and here he is. So, he is running, as I mentioned, uh, for, um, the Winnebago County Circuit Court Branch Six judicial seat. And, uh, he is running against Edmund E.J. Jalinski, who will be on our show next week. So, um, welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me.
Like the tie on St. Patrick's Day, though? We didn't wear green, but.
My daughter picked it out for me today, so.
And in the green tablecloth, so we're celebrating in our own way. So, anyway, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Um, let's talk right off the bat about why you're running for Branch Six.
Certainly, I'm running because, uh, I believe, uh, citizens of Winnebago County deserve a judge that's, uh, proven, respected, and fair. And, uh, I think I meet all of those, uh, elements and that I'm proven in that I've been, uh, in the legal profession for, uh, almost nineteen years. I've been a judicial decision maker as a court commissioner for nearly thirteen years. And, uh, I've heard all types of cases, from criminal to civil to family, juvenile, mental health cases, elder law cases, probate cases. Appreciate that a judge makes decisions involving all those different types of areas.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I've also, uh, been respected. I am endorsed by, uh, retired Judge Bruce Schmidt, who had been the judge in Branch Six for nearly twenty years. He's my treasurer. Uh, also endorsed, uh, by Robert Hawley, the current judge in Branch Six, uh, who's been a circuit judge for over twenty years. As well as Judge William Crane, a retired Winnebago County judge, as well as numerous other judges, uh, law enforcement officials, elected officials, uh, and over ninety Winnebago County practicing attorneys.
Okay. Um, you know, you you've been, as you mentioned, um, a court commissioner for a lot of years. And, um, what, you know, I get confused about this at times. What, and and so I know other folks are, too. What really is the difference, Dan, between a court commissioner and what you do there and a judge? And then the second part of that would be, how difficult do you think that transition will be, going from court commissioner to judge if you're elected?
Okay, uh, court commissioner is appointed by the judges, uh, to serve, uh, in a judicial capacity for the judges. And, uh, you handle various judicial matters for the judges. There's a part of the statute that outlines what types of cases, uh, court commissioner can hear.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, then the judges assign the cases that they wish for me to hear, which, uh, in our county, is almost all of the cases that the statutes will provide for, allow for.
Sure.
And, uh, so we're not elected, we're appointed as court commissioners, but we do serve, uh, in a judicial capacity. We're under the judicial code of ethics, we're required to do the judicial training that the judges do. Uh, and I've been doing that for, uh, almost thirteen years. Uh, if elected to judge, uh, I think the transition would be a fairly smooth transition. I've, uh, been in a courtroom, I've listened to the facts in cases, uh, I've, uh, decided the the law and rendered decisions, uh, in cases from speeding tickets all the way up to murder cases. Um, so I I think that transition of of going from arguing your case as an attorney to deciding the cases as a judicial official would be a fairly smooth transition for me.
Okay.
Um, we're in a period where we're talking about benefits and, um, collective bargaining and all that, so there's a couple of dumb questions. Who 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 do you work for? Who pays your salary?
I'm a county employee at the present time.
You're a county employee?
A judge would be a state employee.
Okay, uh, so you're gonna move to be a state employee if you're elected judge?
Correct.
All right. Um, are you part of giving up paying more for healthcare and for pension if if you're elected? Is that part of what the?
I believe, under the the, what's been proposed and what's been passed.
Budget repair bill that you will?
Yes, I believe there's some impact to to judges, yes.
This is personal, you may not have to, what salary would you start as, uh, in this position if elected?
All judges are paid the same across the entire state, and that's determined by statute.
Okay.
And, uh, I believe the current salary is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but but I I'm not exactly.
I just, I have no idea, that's why. This is a fun question, how many signs do you have out?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, I have, uh, I believe, uh, about two hundred of the larger signs and about four hundred of the smaller signs.
Can I ask what your budget was for signs?
Um, uh, I don't, off the top of my head, know what it is, but.
I have never seen a candidate with so many signs.
Oh, well, thank you.
I mean, I can't go anywhere without seeing that red and white Bissett sign. That's a compliment.
Thank you. But I, you know. I've had a lot of help from from different people.
They are all over, yeah. That's enough for me, for now.
Oh, okay, back to me, all right. Well, Dan kinda touched on, uh, this Dan, sort of touched on the budget already, um, that Governor Walker's proposing. Now, it 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 will eventually impact everybody in some shape, form, or fashion. Um, and it may have some impact on the DA's office and how they're able to prosecute cases, how many attorneys they have to prosecute cases and so forth. Um, and as things trickle down and people have less money, it will probably affect crime because people will have less money. Um, so that will impact you if you're, you know, seated as a judge. Um, there are so many things happening right now in our court system, and we're, you know, our prisons are overcrowded and so forth. With an increase in crime, obviously, and and prisons getting overcrowded and jails being overcrowded, we've gotta look, I think, for probably more alternative sentencing. We've got a lot of good alternatives in this area. Um, what, if you're elected, would you, uh, propose or support in the way of other alternative sentencing?
Well, in Winnebago County, we've been very progressive in in alternative programs. The Drug Court, uh, I'm involved with the Drunk Driving Victim Impact Panel Program.
Mm-hmm.
I'm also a board member of the Conflict Resolution Center. Uh, we've been utilizing conflict resolution for a lot of different cases. We've expanded it to include probate cases, guardianship-type cases. Um, so we've been trying to be, uh, real proactive in regards to that. Uh, I've also been involved in going out to the schools. Uh, I hold court at Oshkosh North and West once a month and do school court there. It's been a great partnership with the courts and the schools. We do truancy cases, smoking cases, different things that happen in the in the school setting. So we're trying to get at those, um, younger offenders and trying to address them early on.
Sure.
So I I'd be very innovative with developing those programs that can try to get those, um, first-time offenders. I've been involved in the Community Justice Advisory Board Program, which is a partnership with probation and parole to, uh, address some ordinance violations and and first-time offenders. And and that's been a a real beneficial program also. So I I'd really certainly be, uh, believing in in trying to get at those early offenders, uh, juvenile offenders, and try to, uh, correct that behavior so it doesn't become chronic and doesn't become a problem later in life. Um, I've also been, uh, involved with the the teen court program and and other types of programs.
Okay, good. One more?
Absolutely, sure, sure.
Um, when it comes to sentencing guidelines, judges, of course, have a great deal of discretion and leeway. Um, we have some judges in this county who, um, have a reputation for being very lenient. And then we have some who have a reputation for being very tough and very strict and adhere very much to the letter of the law and usually throw, you know, the the maximum sentence out there for people. Um, and I understand that, you know, each case has to be looked at individually and on its own merits. But just in general terms, Dan, where would you feel you sort of position yourself? More on the, you know, tough side or on the lenient side?
Well, I don't like to use the words lenient or tough.
Well, I used it.
Okay. Um, I I do think we have to hold criminals accountable for their actions. And, uh, sometimes with, uh, all the alternative programs and and all the excuses that we have in our in our society, sometimes, uh, we don't hold people accountable for their actions. And I I think that's very important. Uh, but I also think we need to look at, and 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 the law ver- specifically requires us to look at the severity of the offense, uh, the characteristics of the offender, and the needs of the public. Those are the three primary areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, for instance, in the characteristics of the defendant, we look at their prior record. We look at their ability to be rehabilitated. Uh, we look at how they've been successful in other areas of their life, uh, how remorseful they are. So there's a a number of different areas within that that we look look at in sentencing somebody. Um, so I I think it would be unethical for me to say I'd be real tough or real lenient, but I I would certainly want to make sure I hold the criminals accountable for their actions, uh, but also consider all of those factors that we are supposed to consider.
Okay.
When I think of, uh, judges and justice, I think of the Old Testament and Solomon with the, uh, the two mothers who were both claiming ownership of the baby and 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 how he worked away so that, you know, he found out who was the real mother. What do you think are the greatest obstacles to justice as a judge?
Um, I think there are financial ob- obstacles. Um, and there are obviously financial constraints on on all of, uh, the government entities at the present time and and have been for a long time. Um, so I think there's those constraints. Uh, I think there's some built-in constraints within our system. Sometimes, um, some of the laws that we have, some of the traditions that we have, um, make getting at justice and and getting at what's right more difficult.
Okay.
Um, there's reasons for most of those. Some of them may have, need to be looked at as as we progress as a society. But but certainly, I think those are two of the the larger constraints that I see.
A follow-up. We hear this in the paper and television all the time about a public defender who's not doing his job. Um, you know, if you if you're hearing a case and and you've got a clear case that the public defender is really not on tune with what's going on, do you have any recourse as a judge to do anything?
Um, we do.
Uh-huh.
Um, and and I think we have an obligation to do so. Uh, I think, uh, it would start maybe informally to talk to the attorney. Uh, it's sometimes very difficult as a judge to really know what the defense is or what the defense could be. Uh, so it's it's difficult to Monday morning quarterback that.
But if the guy's unprepared, he's not doing anything.
Right, we can certainly.
You'd call him in.
Call him in, certainly, and we can report him to the state. Uh, we can remove him from the case. Um, we could contact the public defender's office to ask that he be removed, um, so that, or or she, um, be removed. Um, so there are a a number of different options that the judge would have in those cases.
What do you think of the public defenders in in this county? Are there, are the, you've had experience with them, uh, how would you rate them?
A daily experience, yes, I think we have a very experienced, uh, public defender's office, uh, a private bar that, uh, does public defender work, that's very experienced, very competent. Uh, we have some some very great, uh, public defenders.
Okay, good.
We are, uh, told that we are judged by our peers in our court system. Do you think that juries really do represent, um, you know, society as a whole? Do you do you think it's a fair representation of, and are we being judged by our peers?
Um, most of the time, I do think we are.
Okay.
Um, I think we get a cross-section of of Winnebago County, um, when when, on most jury panels. Um, meaning we get male, female, older, younger, educated, less educated, um, working-class people, um, retired people. And I think it it does represent a fairly good cross-section. We've increased our our pool of jury people to to get as many lists as possible to try to get as many people from different walks of life into the jury box. And and so I think for the most part, yes.
How did that list get increased?
Well, they used to base it primarily on who had a driver's license or who voted. Uh, but now I believe that we're also going into other internet ways of of increasing that list, um, to try to increase that pool, so.
When when, and this is just kinda from my own knowledge, but and maybe you know, maybe you don't, but when you're looking at these different ways and getting other people, how are people screened out? I mean, i- in case they've got some criminal record of their own that would maybe disqualify them as a juror? Um, are there any kind of ways to sort of vet through these people, or does that come up later?
Um, I believe if if they've been convicted of a felony, they they aren't eligible to serve. But if they've been convicted of a misdemeanor, uh, or other types of offenses, uh, they would, uh, when they get into the the jury box, so to speak, then they could be questioned about what, uh, prior involvement they've had and and possibly be excluded either by the judge or by one of the parties.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, for Wisconsin, do you think the current system for disciplined lawyers and judges is effective? Why or why not?
Um, it's it's a difficult system.
I'm referring to the case across the lake of the district attorney, which just didn't seem to, all things weren't clicking.
I I think the current system is is good for financial problems that an attorney may have, where they may be commingling a client's money with their own money and 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 doing those types of, um, problems or 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 discipline problems that they may have. I think it's pretty effective for those types of problems. Where it becomes more difficult is is in the area of such as, uh, the the Calumet County DA's problems, where it isn't, I don't think they're well-equipped for those types of cases.
The system didn't seem to work very well.
It didn't in that case.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but.
Is it hard for lawyers to judge lawyers and hard for judges to judge? I mean, is that part of it?
It may be, it may be. It's it's difficult to judge your peers sometimes, and 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 I think it's.
Probably true of any profession.
Yeah, yeah. You don't wanna think there's bad apples in your profession. We know there is, but it, you don't wanna think that.
Yeah.
Earlier, Dan had mentioned, uh, about, um, I, you know what, I'm having a brain freeze right now.
Same bad stay, just let her go.
I'm just having a moment, but I know the question that I wanna ask.
Here it comes.
I was referencing something you were saying. Um, do you think that, uh, it was about public defenders?
Okay.
And and how they are.
Yeah.
Um, do you think that people in Winnebago County, Dan, have, uh, a fair access to legal help and legal representation regardless of their socio-economic situations?
I I do think we do. We, uh, I I wasn't directly involved with it, but, uh, we started a legal clinic, uh, through the Bar Association a few years ago to, uh, allow, um, people to talk, uh, free to attorneys and and get some general advice about a particular case, whether it be a small claims eviction landlord-tenant case or or a restraining order, a family law case. Um, so I think in that area, we've in increased the ability to pe- for people to get information. Uh, we certainly have a lot more pro se litigants in court, family law court, civil courts, uh, that aren't represented by, uh, parties. Uh, criminal-wise, as I said earlier, I think our our public defenders are are experienced, they're they're very zealous advocates for their clients. Um, and and our private private bar does a very good job representing people, too, in those cases. So, so I I think as a whole, um, people are represented well in Winnebago County.
Okay. Uh, we have a new drunk-driving law that went into effect last July.
Correct.
Um, can you just kind of explain what the changes are for our viewers and then tell us what you think about the law?
Okay, there were a number of changes, I guess I probably won't be able to hit all of the changes, um, but some of.
Some of the more salient points.
Some of the more important ones. Uh, for first-time offenders, for those that had a BAC, blood alcohol content level of point one or higher, now are required to have an ignition interlock device placed on their vehicle, uh, for a period of one year. Um, so that's basically where they blow in before they can start the vehicle. Uh, so that's been a significant change for those first-time offenders. Uh, they also had lowered, uh, the felony status, the, under the prior law, a fifth offense or higher was a felony. Uh, now they've allowed for fourth offenses if there is a prior conviction within the last five years. Um, so there are, and and many times there are, uh, prior conviction, unfortunately. And so that has increased the felonies down to a lot of the fourth offenders, uh, also qualifying as a felony status. Um, so those are two of the, I would think, bigger changes.
Okay.
Um, and and there was a push, obviously, uh, Wisconsin's one of, I think, the only state that doesn't criminalize first-time offenders. And there was a a push for that, which wasn't successful. Um, but I think those are two important changes. I think the ignition interlock device on that first-time offenders at at those higher BAC levels is a a very good change to help, uh, ensure the safety of of, uh, citizens and 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 on the roads.
Okay. Do you ever, you know, wake up in the middle of the night and just wonder, you know, think about a case that you've handled and wish maybe you'd handled it a little differently, or are you good with the decisions that you've made?
Most of the time, I'm I'm good with the decisions. Uh, but there are times, uh, when you do reflect back on on something. And and I think it's more not necessarily the decision I made, but maybe a whole, how I, uh, said it in court, that I could've addressed it better to 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 make the parties feel, um, like they had their day in court in a better way, or or how I handled a particular situation. Um, so I I continually try to critique myself or analyze how I'm handling, uh. that the decision that I'm making affects not only those parties in court, their families, many times victims, but also, in many cases, the community. And trying to understand and appreciate that fact that it does affect a lot of people and appreciate that many of those people are in court one time in their life. And to try to give them a favorable impression. They may not agree with how I rule in the case, but they at least feel as though they had their day in court. I think that's my strength, my courtroom demeanor, my experience. My weaknesses...
People always hate that question.
He declines to answer.
I'm sure I have many, and I'm sure some people would tell you what I have. But I do think, you know, that I'm always trying to get better dealing with people. I mean, it's a people profession that we are in, whether it be attorneys, whether it be the litigants, and my ability to just work with the people is always something that I'm trying to work harder on.
Turn a little bit to the judge's scholar, a little bit. Legislative intent. You're trying a case, and, you know, you can't figure out what the legislative intent of that particular statute was. What do you do?
Well, as a judge, trial judge, we try...
You're not going to get into that.
We don't get into public policy issues, but we certainly have cases that come in front of us that don't neatly fall under the law. And so, we have to look at the case law to see if there's any guidance that the case law can give us.
Gives you more direction.
Gives more direction, yes. And there are cases that don't necessarily even have a lot of direction then. So, then we have to look at what the intent of the legislature was when they...
Which is difficult.
Which can be impossible in some cases. But we try to do that and then try to determine what the law says and the case law says and apply it to those facts and render a decision.
Would you determine constitutionality of a Wisconsin statute in your court?
Generally not.
Generally not.
No. Constitutional issues would come up for a trial judge, for instance, search and seizure issues and that. But when a new law is passed, generally, somebody challenges it on constitutional grounds. So, somewhere in the state of Wisconsin, some trial judge has to make that ruling initially so it can go up on appeal. But of course, there's 200 and some trial judges in the state of Wisconsin. So, the probability that that's going to be you is pretty slim.
Yeah. Okay. Percent of cases that go up to the next level appellate court from just your experience?
From a judge, it would be under 1%.
Okay.
You know, we're talking about justice here, and you've been in the legal profession a long time. What kinds of injustices have you noticed, either inside the courtroom or out? And what was your response to that injustice or those injustices?
The injustices that I see sometimes is how people treat children. You know, I do deal a lot with abused and neglected children. And it's difficult in those cases because those are really our defenseless victims. And so, I just see how that they've gotten the raw deal in their life. And unfortunately, I see them sometimes later as teenagers or as young adults committing crimes. And I appreciate how it goes back in time to their early upbringing. And I think that that's a real injustice that we have done as a society to those poor children.
Do you think that that's... And I agree, that can certainly be a factor in, you know, people's behavior and crimes that they commit. But do you think that that's used, almost overused? I mean, as a reporter covering a lot of things going on in court, you know... Well, you know, you know. You would know better than probably anybody how often that excuse is used, whether it's a true excuse or not. Do you think it's overused?
I think we try to use a lot of excuses for people's behavior and try to use whatever excuse is convenient for that person. And that's why I think we need to hold people accountable. And at the end of the day, if you commit the crime, you have to do the time to a certain respect. But one statistic that I'm chairperson of the Parent Connection, which is our Child Abuse Prevention Board in Winnebago County, one statistic that always haunts me is the fact that 87% of men incarcerated in the prison system in the United States were abused or neglected as kids. And 92% of women who were abused or in prison were abused or neglected. And so, I see that correlation between that early trauma and that abuse and that later. But I do think it gets used, overused at times.
Which current U.S. Supreme Court justices do you respect the most and why?
Well, I think I take pieces of every one of them. I wouldn't necessarily characterize myself as a fan of one or a fan of the other. I like to... And I say this about our state Supreme Court justices and other judges that I've appeared in front of. I like to think I take some of the good things out of all them and maybe take some of the bad... And look at some of the bad things and learn from judges who have done things that I thought, well, that maybe wasn't the best way to handle that. So, I don't...
All right. Let me try it another way. You're in a high school class, and they ask you, which Supreme Court decision influenced your life more than any other?
I would probably say the Miranda decision in the sense that it evolved into criminal area.
Certainly important in your profession.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, there's so many criminal cases, decisions, but that would certainly be...
Okay. Excellent.
We asked you a lot of questions.
We did get a lot asked. And we have so many more that we didn't get to.
Great questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
But we're almost out of time. But why don't you take about 30 seconds or so and just look into camera three and tell folks why they should vote for you, whether it's on April 5th or if they're voting early.
Thank you. Yes. I appreciate your vote on April 5th. I think, as I indicated, the citizens of Winnebago County deserve a judge who's proven, respected, and fair. And I think I meet all of those criterias. And every day in my court, I listen to the facts of the case, apply the law, and render a decision. I do so while treating all parties with respect, and I pledge to continue to do so as a judge. And I'm endorsed by numerous county officials, law enforcement, community members. Encourage people to go on my website, visitforjudge.com, to see a complete listing of all those who are endorsing me, testimonials.
Okay. And we've been putting that address up throughout the show.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, anyway, thank you very much. Good luck. And as I mentioned, Mr. Jalinski will be here on next week's show. So, anyway, that's going to do it for us. Thank you to our guests this hour. Thanks to the crew and to you at home. We will see you next time. Until then, take care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Ashkosh.